Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting for July 30, 2015. We have a lot of special guests in the audience tonight. Mr. or Councilman Lance has our prayer, but we've got treat 197, Boy Scouts Julian Johnson, Danell Johnson, who are working on their citizenship badge and their community merit badge. And so they're going to be leading our pledge after Mr. Lance says our prayer. And then also we'll want to introduce treat 362 when that's over with.
All right. How's it about with me? Well, we just thank you for all the blessings in our lives. And we just want to ask for your wisdom as always as we make decisions for the city. Just be with us here tonight and be with all the Boy Scouts that are here. And thank you for their organization. Amen.
Okay, we'll let Scout Johnson.
I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Also want to recognize from the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, treat 362. And if we're going to call your name out, if you'd stand, we will have the camera just absolutely zooming in on each one of you. All right, so we've got Parker Burton, Daniel Bergeron, is that right? Did I say that correctly?
Bergeron.
Bergeron, okay. Glenn Buchanan, Jack Allen, Carlos Cornell, Tyler Johnson, Devin Reyes, Chase Meredith, and Connor Meredith. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Ohs, do we need to introduce you as a Boy Scout leader also?
Absolutely.
Mr. Ohs, you're an Eagle Scout, correct?
Oh, no, I'm just on the Trip Advisor Committee for 398.
Well, you're our Eagle Scout, Mr. Ohs. Okay. You have several items that are on the consent agenda that are in front of you.
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Ms. Tucker, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Erin, if I can make it through not calling you, Ms. Wright, tonight, it'll be a miracle.
Call him Mayor Brad.
All right, you have two meetings, the July 9, 2015 special meeting and the July 9, 2015 regular meeting in front of you. You see any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Here none, I'll move for approval, listen to the chairman.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Tucker.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Well, now move to third readings and consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15043, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-10, regarding the city's procurement code.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Tucker.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15044, amending the 2015-2016 budget.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Tucker.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to second readings and consider for passage on second reading ordinance 150Z38, to amend the conditions applicable to an area located along the west side of St. Andrews Drive in the Evergreen Farms PRD.
Move for passage.
Second. Motion is second.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Well, consider for passage on second reading ordinance 150Z39, to rezone an area located along the east side of South Highland Avenue, a single-family residential for RS4 District.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. First readings. You have a letter from the principal planner, first reading ordinance 150Z41. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. The item that I brought to you this evening under first readings is an item that we held a public hearing on on July the 9th. Twenty-one point six acres located along the south side of Joby Jackson Parkway, requested to be rezoned from light industrial to heavy industrial. Mr. John Harney, on behalf of Elam Road Partnership, is the applicant. Property is the acreage colored in orange on the map that is on the screen. You'll recall that after the public hearing, the council voted to defer action on this matter. And at that time, there was some discussion about uses that Mr. Harney would restrict, via restrictive covenants, on the property. Just as a reminder, if there are restrictive covenants placed on the property, they would not be a condition on the zoning, they would be a private matter that would be privately enforced, that would not be enforced by the city. And Mr. Harney has just presented this letter to you tonight. And his letter with those uses, as well as some uses that were discussed at the meeting and after the meeting, have been included in your agenda materials. And he has submitted that as a good faith measure to uses that he does plan to restrict, to not be allowed on the property. Also included in your agenda materials is chart one of the zoning ordinance, which is our uses permitted chart. What I've done is I've taken the entire chart and highlighted the light industrial and heavy industrial zoning classifications, so you can see what uses are permitted in each of those two zoning classifications. And just as far as reading that chart, if the use is marked with an X, that means that use is permitted by right, of course, subject to meeting all development requirements such as parking, landscaping, things of that nature. If it's marked with an S, that means it is subject to the issuance of a special use permit by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And uses that go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special use permit do require a public hearing and do have to demonstrate compliance with certain standards that are in our zoning ordinance before the Board of Zoning Appeals can issue that special use permit. And uses that do not have either an X or an S in the box for that particular use are not allowed, period, not allowed by right and not allowed by special use permit. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have relative to this rezoning request. As I mentioned, we've already conducted the public hearing, so no public hearing is on the agenda for tonight for this matter, just consideration on first reading. Mr. John Harney, the applicant, as well as his representative, Mr. Matt Taylor, are in attendance if you have any questions for them.
Mr. Blomley, do you mind reading the restricted uses?
Sure, be glad to. According to the letter submitted by Mr. Harney on, or on Mr. Matt Taylor, on behalf of Mr. Harney, on July the 10th, he is proposing to restrict the property from being used for the following uses: adult cabaret, adult entertainment center, adult motel, adults-only bookstore, adults-only motion picture theater, massage parlor, rap parlor, animal or poultry slaughter, stockyard rendering, refuse processing, treatment and storage, junkyard, metal, sand, stone, gravel, clay, mining or other processing, petroleum, excuse me, petroleum and coal products refining, radioactive materials, storage, production, chemical manufacturing plant, and battery plant and/or battery recycling. And as I mentioned, whatever covenants are placed on the property would be enforced privately and not by the city.
Some of those that are restricted are under special use, though.
So, it would be an S if it was specific.
No, I think what he's saying is that he is looking to completely restrict all of these uses from the property regardless of if they're allowed by right or allowed by special use permit in the zoning regulations.
I got you, okay.
Maybe, Susan, you may be the best one to ask this, but when you say this will be handled privately, can you expand on that a little bit as to what that might look like?
Someone who is a property owner in the vicinity, who, based on how the covenants were drawn up, if the property is used for that purpose, could bring an action to enforce the covenants against the owner of the property that is being used inappropriately.
Got you.
But it would not be the something where they could come to the city and say, hey, they're violating the covenants, and the city could do any regulatory or enforcement action.
Same as in any kind of neighborhood restrictive covenants agreement, right? Yeah.
Does that follow the D in perpetuity forever?
It depends on how the covenants are written. Covenants can say, this is the case for the next 50 years, this is the case until the homeowner's board is fully taken over. You know, it depends on the term of the covenants. Laws don't like things that go in perpetuity because circumstances change. But a reasonable period of time for land can be quite lengthy. But just saying it would be forever is, you know, probably not as good as saying, you know, for the next 40 years or something like that.
Fifty years, okay.
But since this is not something that the city can bargain with or enforce, it would not be up to the city, I think the presentation to you is, could reasonably lead you to believe that this would be for a long period of time and that there would be enforceability, you know, by others other than the property.
Ms. McGannan, if we, if someone came in to get a permit that would be in direct contradiction to what's listed here, is that something our building and codes department or the planning staff would look at and say, this is not permitted on this property?
If, with modern technology, we might be able to say, did you know that this is subject to a restrictive covenant that would not allow it? But that would be a matter of possible information. It would not be a basis for us to turn down giving them a permit to which they were otherwise entitled as a matter under our building code, for instance.
Have we discussed the term of the restrictive covenant with applicant?
I'm sure what you meant to say is the applicant told us.
Yes.
Because we're not negotiating.
I know, I know, okay. That was what I meant to say.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Matt Taylor of SEC. Mr. Harney's indicated that they've been, he's actually got a draft of the covenants with him. He can share those with you, but they are set up to run through 2060.
And Susan, one last question about this, on the covenants, you know, I've just seen it from a neighborhood standpoint, you know, where people have to tear their fences down or whatever after they build them because it didn't comply or things like that. Even though we can't take action, if a neighbor or someone who they feel is affected by that, is it an enforceable, I mean, you know, is, from my experience, it seems to be?
We don't live in the same subdivision, as far as I know. So you could probably not bring an action if I violated the covenants, but somebody who lives in my subdivision could. So it depends on who has the right of enforcement.
I see. Got you.
The principles are the same, whether, the legal principles would be the same as in residential situations. So, you know, you should not have put up your fence in error, I shouldn't have, because the covenants are of record in the register's office. And, you know, that would be something where somebody should look before they invest in construction.
Got it. Any questions for Mr. Blomley?
Last meeting, we had a very spirited and informational meeting with the neighborhood. We heard a lot of their worries, fears, complaints. And what we tried to do was make them realize that this body, the planning commission, our planning director, is not going to put anything in there that's going to be detrimental to the neighborhoods. A wise man once told me, don't tell me what you're going to do, show me what you're going to do. And if you go out on Joby Jackson and you look at the industries that are out there, there's nothing objectionable. They're fine, well-built, modern buildings, in a variety of architectures that we can all be proud of. So the neighbors are concerned, and rightfully so, that something really bad is going to be built out there. And with heavy industrial, there's some by right to that. But I know, and I've been on the planning commission probably too long, that we're not going to let that happen. And we're going to make sure that what we put in there won't be detrimental to the neighborhoods. If you look at the location of this particular piece of property, it's next door to Amazon and it backs up to the interstate ramp. So it's not close to neighborhoods and it's, we built Joby Jackson, we started working on it in the 80s to make it an industrial park, industrial freeway, an industrial area for our city. And I'm proud of what we've done out there, and I think we should continue doing it. With that, Mayor, I'll move for approval.
Okay, you have a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Ms. Tucker, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right. We'll move into new business and consider recommendations of the city manager for the Miracle Field.
Okay. Mayor, members of council, several months ago, Mr. and Mrs. Price approached the city, had meetings with the mayor, Lanny Goodman, our Parks and Recreation Director, myself, with their vision to see a Miracle Field developed in Murfreesboro, specifically at the Sportscom in McKnight Park, really looked like a tremendous opportunity. Since that time, we've had a number of meetings with the Prices in Project 14 to learn more about this. And I thought maybe instead of trying to describe it, we would show you. So we've got a brief video that we want to show you. I think Lanny's going to help cue it up.
What would the Boy Scouts do in this situation?
They're always prepared.
Let me see if I can pick it up for there. Hopefully, the video gave you a sense that, you know, this would be a field for some of our baseball players with special needs and great ability and a great heart for America's pastime to get out and play ball here in Murfreesboro. We brought this idea to the Parks and Recreation Commission a short while ago, and they were very enthusiastic in their support. I know the Prices are anxious to begin a fundraising program, and we really wanted to share this with the council. I think Mr. Bonnie Price, maybe Mrs. Price, wanted to say a few words to the council. And when they finish up, I'll have Mr. Goodman go over a little bit of the concept plan.
Mr. and Mrs. Price, it's good to see you here tonight. I know David went from wearing one TB hat to, I guess today it was announced he's going to be wearing another TB hat, it's just going to be the Toronto Blue Jays, right?
Yes. Been a busy day, busy day. So the Miracle Field is something that David has actually been involved with when he was with Tampa Bay. And he has a real heart for it and really enjoyed going out and being the pitcher a lot of times on those Saturday mornings when he could do that. And it was his heart's desire to build a field like this in Murfreesboro. He felt it would be really good for the community. So when he approached us about it and we spoke to our board, our foundation board about it, and said, well, let's see if we can't partner with the city of Murfreesboro to try to make this happen. He, David tells the story of going out and pitching at some of these games and giving up more home runs than he ever has before. And it, I know in the video you could see some of it, but not only is it, to me, it's not only for those children who have those special needs, but also the, what they call the buddies. And I think it really brings the community together, where these children who come out to be the buddy to help, you know, the special needs child play baseball, they really, you know, get to know these children better and it makes them more comfortable around someone with special needs and not to treat them any, you know, any differently. So we're really excited about it. We think we can raise some good money for it. And we hope that we can get it approved and then get it off and go here. So, did you want to say anything?
You did well.
Would like to recognize the Price family for not only helping lead this, but really being advocates in our city. We've met several times with them, and I know that they've been really active with Mr. Goodman to get this project moving. So we want to publicly say thank you for what you're doing for our community and for partnering with the city. We're excited.
I think this is a great idea. I grew up with a sister with a special need, and years ago, they were outcasts. They did not feel a part of anything, even when she went to school, you know, she was ridiculed and laughed at. And so this is something very, very dear to me. I just wish she was still living that could, you know, benefit from this. But I think it's a very, very good idea, just being in a house with a special need sister all my life. This is something that's really needed for those children, to make them feel a part, make them not only feel good about themselves, but be a part and wanted by the community. I just think it's a fantastic idea.
And it's not only even for the young children, but even young adults with special needs. They are part of that, too. So there's really, really no age limit when you think of it. They can all get out there and share that joy of playing baseball, so.
Yeah, I lost my sister at age 32, so she would have benefited from this. And I really want to thank your family for bringing this to Murfreesboro.
Sure.
We had a program that I work in, had a Challenger League for several years in our community, that did this very same thing. And I can affirm two things. One, it not only affects the children that you're serving, the handicapped and special needs children, but the people that get an opportunity to work in that program are profoundly affected, as you said, by the exposure to how hard these kids work and enjoy. I mean, the smile on their faces is just remarkable. And the other thing I wanted to say, the only thing that was missing in our experience was to have a field that was appropriate for them, because we were playing on existing fields. And that is not always the best place for folks with wheelchairs or handicapped to be able to really enjoy the game. So this is remarkable, and I can't tell you how much joy it brings to my heart to see this come to fruition. And thank you and David for their vision for this, because this will benefit a lot of people.
Well, Mayor, we've got a concept plan. While we're not asking for any formal approval for our construction contract today, I thought it'd be good to share with you some of the preliminary concept plans, so you can get a sense of what that looks like. I think Mr. Goodman can help us with that as well.
Working with the Prices is but a pleasure, I can tell you. Both of them are very dedicated to this community. And just listening to the stories of David going down and pitching to the kids, it just grabs you by the heartstrings. And working with them and trying to find the appropriate spot. Now, there's a lot of locations throughout the city, but there's one location that means a lot to the Prices, and that's McKnight Park. And Ms. Price, you may want to even expound those, why that's important.
Yeah, of course, that's where David played his first baseball, was at McKnight Park. And he remembers, he can tell you the first time he hit a home run at that park. And I remember even as a nine-year-old, when he was playing with the 11-year-olds, and he was their pitcher, I remember well, playing, I think it was against the Braves, and he was playing on the Mets. He, it was the first time he kind of pitched in this league, and he, they won the game, it was like three to two. And David was, you could tell, he was just so focused on this game. And when he came out of the game, he could hardly breathe. And he had asthma when he was that age. And when he got in the car, I was kind of mad at him because he had continued to play and he knew he shouldn't have been out there. But his memories of playing out there on the McKnight Fields are really special to him. So the thought of being able to build this right there was special to him, so.
Thank you. So what we've done is we've looked at other sites, but we've picked McKnight, that's what we're proposing to the council. We have a site master plan development in your packet. And you can see how that is situated in the, I guess you would say, the northwest corner of McKnight Park in front of Sportscom. It's right there at the corner of Memorial and Jarnett. And right now, if you go out, you can see the two, what we always call temporary fields. And they've been temporary now for- And they've been temporary now for, Mr. Lyons giggles at that, because he knows they've been temporary now for about 16 years. But that is where we're proposing to place the Miracle Field. And the Miracle Field is a fully rubberized surface. It is approximately 140 feet. They build them 140, 120 to 140 feet to the outfield fence, but everything, the infield, the running lanes, the outfield, everything is fully accessible. The cost of just the field itself will run somewhere around $4,000 to $450,000. But you can see in the next concept plan how we've incorporated a plaza. Generally, in these designs, there are playgrounds. We have incorporated a playground. And there's a concept called Boundless Playgrounds, where it really challenges and gives those opportunities with children with disabilities or people with all ages, an opportunity to enjoy those. And so, we've tried to incorporate the Boundless Playground into our site plan, and that could be an additional area where we could look to the community possibly for additional funds. But you can see that in the drawing. You can see the shade structures that we have placed in there. Those are important components of a Miracle Field. We have a restroom, and talking to the Miracle League representatives that supply you all of the details that you need to build the Miracle Field. Matter of fact, the Prices join as a member of the Miracle League, and they received the notebook. The notebook is about four inches thick, and they brought it to me. I read over it. It is absolutely one of the best step-by-step guides I have seen in my profession. And it tells you, they have recommended vendors for different things. They have different school boards. They have the entire package put together, all the way down to formulating the teams and organizing the league. So, we'll be using that as our guidance. They're there for our help to make sure that we meet all of the Miracle standards. Loson Associates, who has put this together, has developed a Miracle Field in other areas of the country, and I've visited Miracle Fields. They are wonderful facilities. You go look at them, and you can just see, matter of fact, talking to other Parks and Recreation Directors, they say that not only do they, are they able to play the leagues for children with disabilities, the Miracle Leagues, but they can also use it for other purposes as well, the small children, when they have the rainouts and so forth. It's a multi-purpose facility. So, as you go through these drawings and you look at it, you can see what we're proposing in terms of the Miracle Field. So, we applaud the Prices for stepping forward and saying that they will go out and get in the community and raise the money for this facility, or raise as much as they can for this facility. And we would like to have the endorsement of the City Council for the Prices to say that this is an adopted city project, and when they're talking to different groups. And I know that there'll be a lot of different organizations that will be approached in this community. Anything you'd like to say?
Mayor.
We would definitely like to thank you for allowing us to bring this forward. So, thank you very much.
Mrs. Gels Harris.
Mayor and council, if there are no other comments, I feel very honored to make this motion for approval.
We have a motion and a second, and I would ask if it's possible that we'll do a move by acclamation? If that's possible, is that okay, Ms.? Can I do that, or does someone else need to move for that? Don't rain on my parade, Ms. McGinnan.
I don't want to. I'm trying to remember Robert's Rules of Order for acclamation, whether it's appropriate. I'm sorry.
Well, we're gonna take a unanimous vote, all by a voice roll call on this. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Thank y'all very much.
She snowed on your parade.
I know. She rained on my parade. I'm still, when they talked about 16 years and temporary fields, I'm still thinking that my 16-year anniversary is coming up, and my mother-in-law said I was gonna be temporary, too, so. And I've made it this far, so. We have that in common, Mr. Goodwin. All right, we'll move to consider recommendations of the Planning Commission. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. I'm gonna pull the document here. Mayor McFarland, members of council, during its July 8, 2015 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on a rezoning request for approximately 5.9 acres located along North Thompson Lane and Medical Center Parkway to be rezoned from PUD to MU. And after the public hearing, the Planning Commission took action to recommend approval of the rezoning request. It is recommended that the City Council schedule this matter for a public hearing. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. McGinnan.
September 3.
Move instead of public hearing, September the 3.
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Tucker, if you call the rule.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Our second item today, and the first of two right-of-way abandonment requests. The first one is located along Florence Road and Asbury Road. I've put the map in front of you on the screen. You can see the majority of the request is located on the old Asbury Road, as it intersects with Florence Road, and there are a couple of small slivers of excess right-of-way of Florence Road that is included in this as well. Just as a little bit of history, when the Thistle Downs PUD was approved back around 2005, one of the elements of that PUD was to relocate the Asbury Road further to the north of the intersection, or further to the north of the I-24, 840 Bridge. And that did a couple of things, but one of the main things it did is it got the intersection of Asbury Road further away from that bridge, where there was an elevation change at that bridge coming down. So, subsequently, in 2000, early 2015, the Waldron family moved forward with the recording of the plat for Thistle Downs Section 3 and Thistle Downs Section 4, which, at that time, the street was officially relocated. And at that time also, the existing Asbury Road, at its intersection with Florence Road, was closed to through traffic. The Waldron family made a request to abandon the right-of-way both along Asbury Road and on Florence Road adjacent to the Thistle Downs subdivision. Staff did conduct a study on this right-of-way abandonment to determine the, whether or not it would have any negative impact on various city departments, and it was determined that the, that the right-of-way was excess right-of-way, and it no longer served a purpose as a public right-of-way. And there were several conditions of approval that staff recommends. It is recommended that the City Council approve the right-of-way abandonment request with the following conditions. Number one, easements shall be retained as needed for utilities and drainage, as determined by the city engineer and other utility providers. Number two, the applicant must provide a legal description and exhibit and any other documentation necessary for the preparation of required legal documents. Number three, the applicant will be responsible for recording the quitclaim deed. Number four, all legal documents are subject to the approval of the city attorney. Number five, the abandoned rights-of-way shall be incorporated into the proposed lots in Section 5 of the Thistle Downs subdivision. And finally, number six, the applicant shall participate in roadway and right-of-way modifications to accommodate the shift of the relocated Asbury Road in a manner determined by the city engineer and in general agreement with the Waldron family agreement for right-of-way dedication on Florence Road in 2006. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this matter on June the 3. At that time, it deferred action on it to address some concerns of the public. At the Planning Commission meeting on July the 8, the Planning Commission then, after those concerns have been addressed, unanimously recommended the approval of this right-of-way abandonment, and no public hearing is necessary by the City Council at this time, and the Planning Commission does recommend approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I'd like to compliment staff on this particular item. A lot of misinformation early on in this, Ms. McGinnan, and our planning director went out and met with the individuals, explained to them what was going on and why we were doing this, and it answered all the questions and solved all the problems. So, that's what we're supposed to do, and we did it.
You want a motion? Move for approval?
With the staff recommended comment.
Including all staff comments.
Second. Motion and a second with staff comments. Ms. Tucker.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland, our second right-of-way abandonment request is also located on Florence Road. It is on the very north end of Florence Road in the city limits, as it intersects with Northwest Broad Street. And here is the map right here. It's the property colored in orange. This has not functioned as a portion of Florence Road since around 2003, 2004. At that time, Florence Road, as it intersects with Northwest Broad Street, was realigned to the north and to the west, so that it intersected with Northwest Broad Street at a 90-degree angle. This segment of Florence Road essentially serves as a driveway access to the Florence Station Market to the west and the city limits liquors to the east. The, both of the adjacent property owners, both the owners of both of those adjacent businesses have requested that this right-of-way be abandoned and quitclaimed to them, and they have made that request. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing at this matter at its July 8 meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the matter. It is recommended that the City Council consider this for, this matter for abandonment as well. Staff recommends the following conditions. Number one, utility and drainage easements as needed must be retained prior to the abandonment of the right-of-way. Number two, the applicant must provide a legal description and exhibit and any other documentation necessary for the preparation of the required legal documents. Number three, all legal documents are subject to the approval of the city attorney. Number four, the applicant will be responsible for recording the quitclaim deed. And number five, the abandoned right-of-way shall be divided between the two adjacent property owners in a manner that will square up the adjoining property line, more so than it exists today. The division of the abandoned right-of-way will be subject to the final approval of the city engineer. And let me explain that last comment. The initial abandonment request that came into the Planning Commission requested that the right-of-way be divided along the center line of that segment of Florence Road. Both of those properties currently have very skewed side property lines that would affect the development and redevelopment of those properties. Attempting to square up those property lines as much as possible will help to facilitate development and redevelopment in the future, give proper driveway aisles and parking space dimensions, so that future redevelopment can occur in a manner that is compliant as possible with our zoning regulations. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions. No public hearing is necessary for this matter before you tonight.
Any questions?
Move for approval, subject staff comments.
Second. Motion and a second. Ms. Tucker, if you call the rule.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll now consider recommendations of Assistant City Manager about the North Murfreesboro Greenway Trailhead. Mr. Crumley.
Good evening. We are recommending to you the transfer of four acres of the Coleman Farm from the Water Sewer Fund to the General Fund. This would become the site of the trailhead of the North Murfreesboro Greenway. Back in 2007, Congress appropriated $3.2 million for a trailhead, and as far as the trail would go with that amount of money, to be built, starting around Walter Hill Park and going along the river on Core Property. In a partnership arrangement, the original plan called for the city to donate the property for the trailhead. So, this completes our commitment to that project with the Core. We've taken this twice to the Water Sewer Board. I'm not sure the map is going to be large enough that you can see this completely. The price with the Water Sewer Board of $11,000 an acre was agreeable. However, Water Sewer preferred a different location than what we're recommending to you tonight. If you can see this map, in the lower right-hand corner was the original location proposed for the trailhead. This was at the time, it was in conjunction with a possible public safety training facility. It has a very lengthy road coming in off Central Valley to get into that site, which, again, adds cost to the trailhead. There's only a fixed amount of federal money available for this project. We're recommending to you a site in the upper left-hand corner, in the northwest portion of a 50-acre compartment of the Coleman Farm, that is not usable by Water and Sewer for displaying the reused water that the farm was originally purposed for. The site, much easier to access, much more available utilities, lower cost in terms of putting this on the ground. The principal reason that Water Sewer preferred the lower right-hand corner was future use of the property. They have begun a process to have the property appraised, and I think in the not-so-many different distant months, you'll be seeing a proposal for them to do something with the property, other than just hold it for Water and Sewer purposes. Be glad to try to answer any questions. Loson Associates, under contract with the Core, is doing the design of the trailhead. They'll be at Planning Commission next month.
We want to add that whenever this location was changed, after we had the community meeting at Walter Hill, I called Mr. Robinson, Jake Robinson, and he distributed this out, location change, out on their community website and sent this out to email format, and he came back and said that residents had no issue. They were actually excited about it being a little closer. The only thing that they would have asked is to have a sidewalk on Central Valley Trailhead connecting their neighborhood. And so, we said that, we were gonna work that out to make sure it would be easily to walk from their neighborhood to the trailhead.
That will be in the plans.
Mr. Crumley, since they can't use this for spraying, do we get a better price?
Well, the original purchase price of Coleman Farm was $9,000 an acre back in 2007. The price was negotiated between our staff and the Water and Sewer staff. Water Sewer Board concurred with it. $11,000 an acre, I think, is still a very, very good price for those acres at the farm.
How much acreage are we talking about?
Four.
Four. 3.99, to be specific.
One thing I'll mention, too, just real quickly, you know, one of the things that's nice about this is that, you know, we've gone from, you know, in a situation where we, where we can move off of somebody's fence line, instead of being on top of somebody's fence line, you know, this makes sense on so many levels, and lest you guys have some questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval. Oh, sorry, wait.
One real quick question. Has anything changed? Why, why would there be less need to distribute this water that we're currently spraying on there? Has something changed that we?
This 50 acres in this, I call it the dog ear. It's separated from the balance of the farm by Central Valley Road. Because of the lay of the land, it is not usable for the current spray methods that Water and Sewer has chosen. There are a couple of actual little valleys on this property that would provide access to the river that would be too easy for what Water and Sewer would need on the disposal of that water. They've looked at it and just don't find any way that they can make it work for the disposal of the reused water.
Okay.
Swell.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Tucker.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll consider for adoption Resolution 15R31, expressing official intent that certain expenditures should be incurred in connection with certain public works projects and related expenditures for renovations to Bradley Academy be reimbursed from proceeds of notes, bonds, or other indebtedness to be issued or incurred by the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
Mayor, actually, you want to talk about item number 11. You just read number 12.
You may have skipped one, but they both affect Bradley Academy.
I'm sorry. Consider recommendations of the, you're not going to make me read that again.
No, sir.
Consider recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Director Memorandum of Understanding with Bradley Academy Historical Association. I apologize.
Let me compliment Lanning. Lanning has done yeoman's work in working with the Bradley Academy Historic Association in preparing a very workable arrangement where the city can assist in the operation, daily maintenance, and other functions of Bradley Academy. But I just wanted to compliment Lanning. He's done a really good job of this.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. I do have for you a consideration, a memorandum of understanding that is between the City of Murfreesboro and the Bradley Academy Historical Association. What this memorandum of understanding will do, will transfer the operations of the Bradley Museum and the management of Bradley Museum to the city as of approved, as of August the 1st, 2015. The city did enter into a lease agreement with the Bradley Academy Historical Association to manage and operate the museum on July the 1st, 1996, which was for 20 years. That, this MOU will essentially terminate that agreement, and it will transfer that operations to us. In accordance to the MOU, the City of Murfreesboro through Parks and Recreation Department would assume the management, operation, and the programming of the museum, and the Bradley Board would act as an advisory/friends group that would help in the fundraising. They would still continue to do a lot of the programs, the big events that they do. They would supply us volunteers, and our department would work hand-in-hand jointly with the board on the operations and the future programming of that facility. The funds needed for managing, operating, and programming was actually included in the FY '16 budget. That was approximately $145,000. And the staff and administration and the Bradley Board has looked over the memorandum of understanding. We all agree, there's a couple of areas that we may have to tweak just to further clarify in the agreement, but it is a recommendation of City Staff, Administration, and the Bradley Academy Historical Association that the City of Murfreesboro assume the management and operations of the Bradley Academy Museum as of August the 1st, and that the mayor be authorized to execute all the necessary documents pending any legal review and approval. So, with that, I would be glad to answer any questions you have. I'm sure Mr. Crumley would be glad to answer any questions. Like Mr. Crumley had mentioned, we have been meeting with them for several months now to work out the operation, the management, et cetera. And as you know, we are doing renovation right now, about $117,000, to bring that facility back up to where it needs to be. Glad to answer any questions, Mayor.
Any questions for Mr. Goodwin?
Could you just kind of explain how the Board of Directors, the existing Bradley Board of Directors are related, are kept in the loop of this process?
We have, we started with a big open meeting where all of the Board of Directors were invited. We made a presentation to them. We talked about if we assumed the operations and the management of the facility, what that would look like. We talked about potential hours of operation, basically a 10 to 6, Monday through Saturday operations, much in line with any other type of museum that would be operated. We talked about what we would do as a city, how we work with other organizations, and we filled in a lot of questions. Mr. Shacklet, we were probably there, I'd say, an hour and a half, maybe a good two hours, answering questions to the board. Since that time, we've met with the executive board. They've kept communications going to their board. The draft of the MOU, the first draft, went to them. They sent back their changes, their first draft. We combined those. We sent those back out. So we've been tweaking this for some time.
The question was going forward, you know, what is their role in?
Their role is going to be looking at the special events, things like the Willie McGowan Festival they have, the June 19th, those kind of things, the Juneteenth festivals, those kind of things, they will continue to do. And moving the museum forward and doing things, getting travel and exhibits, et cetera, they've agreed that they would help raise the funds necessary to do that and hopefully propel that forward, looking at helping increase tourism, helping increase the exposure of the museum to the community, getting the schools more involved, those kind of things is what we've talked about, so.
Thank you.
Would the school or building continue to have its conference rooms?
It will. It will. And one of the things that we've talked about, and there's very limited parking there at Bradley Museum. Of course, that'll be one of the things that we'll look at in the future, if there's opportunities to get additional properties where we can increase that, that would be one of our recommendations in the future. But I know when we built Patterson, a lot of the meetings that were bigger actually went to Patterson because it was more convenient. What we said was, is there's a lot of times when Patterson or other places that we have, because we have a network that we work through in booking meetings and making recommendations, that that could be another area that we can recommend for people if we're booked in other areas. So, the marketing, the promotion, and even the networking of our facilities, I think, is a win for the museum as well.
You touched on my biggest concern about the whole future of the operation, and that's the parking. I mean, we have to pursue somehow securing an area in which conference rooms become functional because currently the absolute weakness in this whole operation is the ability to find a place to park. And without that, I'm not sure that it'll ever have viability as a meeting place. But, you know, I encourage you to pursue that as adamantly as you possibly can and as quickly as you possibly can because for true success, I think that is a must, must thing that parking has to be improved.
It is, Mr. Smother. And one of the things that we assured the board about was that we're not going to come in the first day and start making wholesale changes. We want to evaluate the program. We want to see where improvements can be made. If there's things that we can do from a professional level that we know that will make the museum more attractive, do things like you're talking about, more parking, those kind of things where we can, we can make it a more viable facility for the city, that's our goal.
With no further comment, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Tucker, if you call the rule.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Mr. Crumley?
Lanning is still being very modest. His Parks and Rec team has enormous capabilities when it comes to the marketing of Bradley's museum and the historical aspects of that building, and they'll be on this very, very quickly. Part of the project was to restore the building itself back to a usable state. In April, the council awarded a contract to BB&amp;T Constructors to replace the roof, to rebuild the front door assembly, to do some other major maintenance-type work to the building. We've ground to a halt as they've discovered lead paint around some of the windows in the building, and we're having to step back a little bit and redo that. We currently think the total cost of the renovations at Bradley are going to be around $130,000. Our first effort at funding in that was to use community development block grant funds. Our oversight, we failed to bid the project using Davis Bacon wages, and so the community development funds are not available for us at Bradley. However, in the CIP, which you've yet to see, we had a number of improvements to various city buildings ADA, American with Disabilities Act improvements. They are eligible for the community development block grant funds. So tonight before you is Resolution 15R31, reimbursement agreement for up to $150,000 worth of work at Bradley that we would pay for from the bond funds. That would be netted out of the CIP by removing that ADA work from the CIP as it stands now and using the community development funds, properly bid, using Davis Bacon wages, to fund those ADA improvements. We'd recommend that you approve 15R31.
I'll move for that.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Tucker?
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll now consider for adoption Resolution 15R32, authorizing submittal of a grant application for composting and improving a memorandum of understanding with Rutherford County. Letter is on your desk.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Solid Waste Department, along with the counterpart in Rutherford County, Solid Waste, has been working here for the last three or four months on a grant that the state has approached us with on looking at composting food waste at our facility at 4765 Florence Road. And the grant funding is available for the composting project will be, is really just to decrease the amount of solid waste that's going into the Middle Point landfill. The purpose of it is to, really to allow us to start working more together because the landfill is going to be one of the bigger issues coming up in the next five to 10 years. And, you know, we already, we already work together in so many different ways in the solid waste departments that this is just sort of makes a, this has been a learning experience for both of us because we're actually looking at some things that we're probably going to be looking at in 10 years, looking at decreasing our solid waste in Rutherford County anyway. That the physical impact is actually nothing right now because when the state looks at and looks at awarding the bids, it's not going to be happening until January or February of 2016. The, when that happens, we'll be coming back, Mac will have to go back to the, McNolan will have to go back to the Rutherford County Commission, and I'll have to be coming back to y'all and say, they have awarded this, and this is our recommendation as to what we think we should proceed with. The grant, it will be a matching fund grant. It's a 50/50 split, and so we'll have to spend so much to get so much. And, but right now, we're just asking that the MOU be, the memorandum of understanding be accepted with Rutherford County so that we can proceed to at least apply for the grant. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? No questions, I move for approval.
Of the resolution?
The resolution. Motion is second. Ms. Tucker, if you call the rule.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Joey, before you get away, how many days till kickoff?
Five Saturdays.
Five Saturdays.
Yes, sir.
And then six Saturdays from now, y'all will be playing?
MTSU.
And you'll be wearing blue on that day?
September the 11th.
And we'll expect you to wear blue on that day because you're from Murfreesboro and...
Actually, I will be probably having to wear maroon and white because I have a niece that's going to be getting married at Starkville. So I'll be having cowbells.
All right, good luck with both.
All right, we'll move to Board and Commission appointments. I have reappointment to the Murfreesboro Housing Authority, Mr. Charlie Teasley, for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Tucker, if you call the rule.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Have future appointments for you to look at for our next meeting to the Senior Citizen Commission, the Water and Sewer Board, the Board of Electrical Examiners, the Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals, the BZA, the Historic Zoning Commission, and the Planning Commission. No action tonight, but we'll be ready for the next meeting. Ms. Tucker, do we have any beer permits?
We do, Mayor. We have two special event permits for your approval tonight. The first is for the Chamber. They've added a business after hours on August 11th from 5:00 to 7:00. It's at the Daily News Journal's office location. And the second is for the Oakland's Association. They've requested permits for several fundraisers at the Oakland's Mansion. There are three. The first is September 23rd from 5:00 to 10:00. The second is September 26th from 5:00 to 10:00. And the last is on December 4th from 6:30 to 10:30. Both organizations have met our requirements.
I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion is second.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Do you have the statements in front of you?
It's you, Eddie. Second.
I move we pay the bills.
Second. I have a motion to second. Ms. Tucker, we have a motion to pay the bills.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Any other business to come before the City Council?
Mayor, I'd like to address the Boy Scouts here for a second. Mr. Ives, raise your hand back there, please. Mr. Ives and I spoke at an Eagle Ceremony this weekend, and it was really exciting to see a long journey in for a scout, started as a Tiger Cub and go all the way from Tenderfoot to Eagle. And I would encourage you all to do that, and I would be glad and happy to come and speak at your Eagle Ceremony. Thank you.
And I think my son was in that same troop. What troop were you in?
162.
No, I don't think that was it. One of those senior moments.
Hey, I would like to make one quick comment. And I pick on Ms. Michado a lot, but, because we aggravate each other back and forth, but Ms. Michado keeps everyone in these meetings going along, so I just want to publicly say thank you for keeping everything. Everything that you see, she keeps everyone, everything, all of our packets together, everything's put together, and it couldn't go so seamless without your help, so thank you very much.
Shane, one other thing.
Yes?
We had a stakeholders meeting the other night for the people involved with the sign ordinances, and the meeting went very well. We had some very constructive criticism and very lively debate and comments. It was a good meeting. I think before we get to the Planning Commission and before we get to the City Council for the readings on those things, I think it's important that all business owners and those people who will be affected by these sign ordinances, if you get an opportunity, go to the city's websites, murfreesborotn backslash codes, I believe it, dot gov, backslash codes. Murfreesborotn.gov backslash codes. You can read the proposed ordinance and familiarize yourself with it. Make sure it's something that is acceptable to you and that you understand... Make sure it's something that is acceptable to you and that you understand exactly what effects it will have. If you're good with it, great. If you don't, be sure and let us know.
They will. A adjourn, adjourn, adjourn.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. See, no more business. We will stand adjourned.